Thanks, we commence our inquiry into workplace drug testing in Victoria. Thank you. These last sessions, joining us will also have the Drug Advisory Council of Australia Limited. Joining us is Jan Kronberg and Karen Broadley. Ladies, before we continue, I just want to read this information regarding the evidence you provided to us today. All evidence taken is protected by Parliament's privilege as provided by the Council Act 975 and further subject to the provision of Lesards Council's standing orders. Therefore, the information provided during this hearing is protected by law. You are protected against any action for what you say during this hearing, but if you go elsewhere and repeat the same thing, those comments may be protected by disprivilege. Any deliberate false evidence or misleading of the committee may be considered contemptible to Parliament. All evidence is being recorded. You will be provided with a proof version of the transcript following the hearing. The transcript will be made public and posted on the committee website. Again, thank you for coming in and waiting around for this last session. I know you made a submission. Could you please state your full name and organisation you are representing, just for record, please?
Thank you, Chair. My name is Janice Susan Kronberg, and my role is that of National President of the Drug Advisory Council of Australia Limited.
Karen? Karen, would you just...
Oh, sorry. Karen Broadley. So I'm an executive member of DACA, the Drug Advisory Council of Australia.
Thank you. Quickly, I'd just introduce you to the committee. I'm Chul Lu, the Chair. My deputy chair is Mr Ryan Bachelor, Mr David Egshank, and Dr Sarah Mansfield. Also on Zoom is Dr Rene Heath. I know you provided a submission already. I just wanted to invite you, all our guests, a quick opening statement before we open to the panel for the question.
Thank you very much, Chair. Well, between Karen and I, I'm going to speak first. So on behalf of the Drug Advisory Council of Australia Limited, which is now a registered charity and as their national president, we appreciate this opportunity for us to appear as witnesses today. During my eight years as a member of this legislative council, I first served on the Joint Law Reform Committee, and when we were in government, I chaired both the Joint Outer Suburban and Interface Services and Development Committee and the Joint Education Committee, and so I can continue to draw upon much of this real-world learning for today. My erudite colleague, Dr Karen Broadley, with us today has her PhD in child protection. Dr Broadley will draw upon her 20-year career in the front line of child protection, youth justice, and academic research. This proposed legislation causes us great concern, and tragically, we see that often the elite dismiss and denigrate opinions that are not in line with their own. So we say that one needs to face up to the issues faced by nations that have already legalized cannabis. One could say it is to look into the belly of the beast and be afraid, very afraid. Now, of relevance today is last month's article published in the US Association for the Study of Pain, Journal of Pain, volume 25, number four, April 2024, pages 833 to 842, headed: Featured Article: Cannabis Oil CBD Products for Pain (Ineffective, Expensive, and With Potential Harms). And on page 838, we find the heading: Is Pharmaceutical Grade CBD Safe? Cannabis and cannabis-based medicines have come under scrutiny regarding road and workplace safety. In 2018, the Occupational and Environmental Medical Association of Canada endorsed a position statement on the implications of cannabis use for safety-sensitive work, which commenced that until definitive evidence is available, it is not advisable to operate motor vehicles or perform safety-sensitive tasks for at least 24 hours following cannabis consumption. Cannabis consumption is associated with a more than doubling the risk of motor vehicle collisions and is also associated with a range of other serious harms. A recent cross-sectional study in Canada has reported an almost 500% increase in emergency departments' visits involving road traffic injuries associated with cannabis following legalization. So ladies and gentlemen, here we are today, sandwiched between the reported facts on the ground in North America just last month and the simple rebranding exercise brought about by Keith Stroup, who headed up Normal in 1979. Now Pamela McColl reveals on page 34, and I'm displaying this book for the purposes of handsart, The Pipers of Pot: Protecting Youth from the Marijuana Industry. And I'm quoting verbatim from page 34. "In a presentation to Amerine University that year, Keith Stroup said, 'We will use medical marijuana argument as a red herring on the road to full legalization.' And as with most of the initiatives by the pro-drug lobbyists, we see an illusion of responsibility. But it's always darkly cloaked with a tone of reasonableness and an action imperative. It is my sincere wish that members of this committee will recognise these sinister siren songs for what they are. Frankly, legalising something harmful never removes the harm. And frankly, this is the same as putting lipstick on a pig. It's still a pig. It changes the legal consequences, usually for those who promote, produce, or in other ways profit financially from the legalised substance. There is little to no regard for the negative impact on individuals or society. And so ladies and gentlemen, this proposition is clearly a Trojan horse that has been steadily built up since 1979, but with more muscle being added every year. And I say, 'Oh, what a tangled web we weave when we set out to deceive.' And this is a gift to the committee, because I'm going to quote our founding patron Elaine Walters' OAM, and she offers this today. An unexciting truth can easily be eclipsed by a thrilling falsehood, and we attribute that to Aldous Huxley." Karen Broadley.
Karen?
Thank you, Chair. Look, I'm just going... This is our submission, so we did a submission to the inquiry.
We won't go for the submission, just any opening statement.
Right, and I'll just make a couple of points, really, three or four points about the submission, just to clarify a couple of things. So our basic message is that if employees have recently used cannabis, either hours ago or days ago, this will result in a heightened risk of accidents and other adverse events, risking the health and safety of employers, co-workers, and the public. Now, the few points I just want to make is that we make the point that medicinal cannabis should be treated differently to other prescription medications. Other prescription medications is a big bag, like there are thousands of other medications. So whilst we recognise that some of those other medications, prescribed opioids, Valium, sleeping tablets, they might be concerning, that's a different question. And if we're concerned about some of those, obviously we need to do some sort of inquiry or investigation or ask some questions about that. So we use this terminology because this was the term used in the terms of reference, but it's a bit difficult to compare cannabis with other medications when there are so many of them, like antibiotics, anti-inflammatories, so many. The second point I'd make is that our main concern, and we heard the previous witness talk about, safety-sensitive environments. And so obviously, our concern is more about, like, it's about some environments, some workplaces, more than others. And our recommendation is that employers should be able to develop their own drug policy, drug and alcohol policy, depending upon their environment, depending upon their workplace, and depending upon the risks that are associated with their workplace and their work activities. Another quick point is that we draw from systematic reviews, recent systematic reviews as much as possible. We're concerned about people and experts, so-called experts, when they give evidence. If they draw on old, single studies, like a 2009 single study, 15 years old, we see that happen. We've made a very concerted effort not to cherry pick an old study that might confirm our point of view. We think it's very important to find recent systematic reviews, and a systematic review is when the authors go through a systematic process, an unbiased process, to find evidence and studies, and then review those studies. So we found a systematic review, a recent one, 2023. This reports on the findings of that systematic review and found that sedation to be a concern, nausea, vomiting, dizziness, and euphoria. And then in our human rights section, in our submission, we just talk about the fact that, yes, we are concerned about... We don't want to discriminate against people in the workplace, but there's also the human right to life and the human right to safety. And according to the Victorian Charter of Human Rights, the right to life and the right to safety is a non-durragible right. It's a right that can't be suspended or limited in any way. And sometimes, like, for example during those COVID times, we remember lockdowns and, you know, our human rights, our human rights to, you know, freedom of association and freedom of movement, those things were suspended for the sake of the right to life. And so we believe that drug testing, drug and alcohol testing, and workplace testing should be continued as it is according to people's... Like, when I say people's, I mean organisations, businesses, workplace policies. And certainly, we heard from the last witness talking about education for workplaces, very important. But they still need to have the... Be empowered to manage, to assess, and then manage their own risks.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you, Jan. I'll quickly follow-up question that you've... Listen, your submission, I know in your submission you mentioned DACA, strongly advocate for investment in drug rehab services across the nations and provide greater support in giving to families of those who are affected by drugs. You also mentioned that you argue that medicinal cannabis should be treated differently to prescribed medications. So when you say that, what about prescribed medicinal cannabis? How do you... What's your view on prescribed... At the moment, we do have prescribed CBD or cannabis, which has some THC, which I'll go to it, but what's your position, listen to that, with the rest of prescribed medication across the board?
Well, it needs to be treated differently to other prescribed medications. So if cannabis is prescribed, it needs to be treated differently to other prescribed medications, primarily for the reason, and we say this in our submission on page five, that near the top third dot point, that there is no globally accepted definition of impairment associated with medicinal cannabis, and no agreement on how to measure its occurrence. So if that were to change, then we would certainly be talking about that. That would matter. That would be a big deal if that was to change. But I think for us, for me, I think for us, that is the sticking point, that there is no globally accepted definition of impairment. We can't measure impairment. Impairment doesn't equal positive test. There's just too much we don't know.
Also, we have heard that the impairment or so-called impairment or cognitive effects mainly caused by THC. What's your view, listen to the CBD without the THC in it, or very minimum amount or traces of THC, which has no result when doing testing? Prescribed cannabis, which is CBD oils, which has no THC in it or so minute amount, when you test it, it doesn't show up. So what's your view on those one?
Can I just read out one other study, just very quickly, which I actually found last night? Because Jan and I were talking about this last night, about CBD. And I quite quickly found a study. It was published in 2022, so quite recently. It's a systematic review. It's called Adverse Effects of Oral Cannabis Oil: An Updated Systematic Review of Randomised Controlled Trials. So when it comes to a hierarchy of evidence, this is right up the top of the hierarchy of evidence. It's a systematic review of randomised controlled trials, published recently. And it was a review of 12 studies, and in there it says, and I'll quote this, I just wrote it on my phone last night. It says, "The results showed that CBD had mild and moderate adverse effects in most studies. The most common being drowsiness, sedation, fatigue, dizziness, headache, diarrhoea, nausea, decreased appetite, and abdominal discomfort." Now, those first few, I think particularly, in some work environments, that would be concerning, being drowsy, sedated, fatigued, dizziness, in some work environments. So I think even with CBD, there are concerns. Some people have concerns. Not everyone has concerns. There's a lack of consensus, yes? Would be good to have some consensus, but this is very, very... There are very, very diverse opinions about these issues.
I'll go on your ask, because you mentioned that medicine should be treated differently. I just wanted to go regarding your stand, opposition, listen to the CBD, which has been... Some submissions say that there were no impairment effects when there's no THC or trace of THC in it.
Yeah, yeah. I can send you that article, if you like.
Chair, I'm just wondering, would I be able to amplify that point?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Sorry, Jan.
Thank you. I'm actually just holding this up, and it's been a worked-over document in the last 24 hours. But if it's of value, we could table an electronic copy of this. I won't give you this grubby one. Because it's a really important... I feel that it's a breakthrough set of findings as published by the US Association for the Study of Pain. And the heading is Cannabis Oil CBD Products for Pain: Ineffective, Expensive, and With Potential Harms. And I'd just like to preface what I'm going to read into the record with this comment is that we need to go to really call things when we're talking about the prescribing of medicinal cannabis. If what's been found and reported on in this respected medical journal in the United States last month, and I think you can get things much more current than that, we should be questioning why medicinal cannabis is being brought to bear for people who have pain. I personally suffer from complex regional pain syndrome from six orthopaedic surgeries, and I still have a limp from a major injury. And so I accessed a lot of typical pain relief medications, opioids, lyrica, things like that, anti-inflammatories. And I don't take any of that now. Why? Because other things have come in, physiotherapy, exercise, weight reduction, and therefore I'm not committing to a lifetime outlook of needing to take medicinal cannabis. So my question is, if people feel they need to take medicinal cannabis, what is their outlook for taking it for? Are they taking it for a day, a week, a month, a year, a decade? Until their grandchildren arrive, how long do they want to be suspended by this? Because they know that eventually, and we know, that there is a ratcheting up of the THC content in it because we know that this is the stalking horse for further legalization programs. We've tabled the evidence of that. That's a fact. And there were people here who won't like to hear that information, but we can't change history. That has occurred. That's on the record consistently, through the 70s, the 80s, on 90s, in print media and on television, and it's accessible. So our concern is, why are we looking at saying, "You must have medical cannabis. You must have it." And you must look to engineering everything around society to have that. We have to commend scientists, people looking for different forms of medicine and pain relief. I'm a chronic pain reliever myself, and I feel quite passionate about why people would be looking at just one course of pain relief, or for... But it's not pain relief anymore. We know that other things have been brought in. It's coming tantamount to why people would recreationally be using cannabis. They would be using cannabis to relieve tension, to face up to the next day, to confront a family dispute, a whole range of reasons why people need something to ameliorate their feelings. People drink alcohol for the same purposes. So I'm really pleased to have had the opportunity to make that point. I think it's really important, because if we're saying, "Testing in the workplace", we're saying, "If you're found to be taking this medicine, medicinal cannabis, then you might lose your job, or you'll be impeding progress through the phases of your career." We have to look at it from, what's the need? What is the need?
All right. Just if you want to table that, I'll pass my... Give us some time to get some meetings, ask some quick questions as well. I think, Ryan, you wanna...
Thanks, Chair. Ms Kronberg, Ms Broadley, do you think that it should be legal to prescribe cannabis for medicinal purposes in Victoria?
It is legal, so we have to accept that that's a fact.
Do you believe that it should be legal? Do you support the law's existence?
No, I'm uncomfortable with that.
Do you believe that people who are prescribed opioid-based medications should be permitted to work?
Yes, but there's going to be limitations to what occupations they have.
So you believe that there should be limitations on the employment of people who are prescribed opioid-based medications?
Okay, that's a curly angle you put in there.
Just a question.
No, no.
It's sort of the...
It comes back to the hierarchy of human rights.
But it also speaks to those other medications, which we didn't look into those other medications, because there are so many of them. There are a thousand of them. You know, there could be opioids, there could be, you know, different types of sleeping tablets and Valium, and there's all sorts of things. So the question in the terms of reference is not great, in my opinion, humble opinion. When you're trying to say, when the question is treating prescription medicinal cannabis as compared to other prescription medications, when you're comparing one medication, albeit there's many types of cannabis, with a thousand or more others, do you know what I'm saying? So it's sort of... Well, it's beyond what I've researched and what we really know in detail to really be able to answer to opioids. It's a different question. And if there are concerns about that, if people have concerns about that, we'll then investigate those concerns, look into those concerns. And if there are concerns, we don't want to add to those concerns by bringing cannabis into that mix as well, medicinal cannabis. They're two very different things. Sorry to interrupt.
I'll just...
I don't need your...
Yeah, thank you. I'm fine. I think the deputy chair's medicine says impairment or effects of certain drugs, which is across the board, because cannabis has been brought up to attention quite regularly, been quickly in use at the moment. We understand opim has certain side effects in some impairment. And we're trying to establish, because cannabis has been put forward, that THC has absorbed impairment. Some say they don't. So we're just trying to get your view, listen to, is opioid with impairment compared to cannabis impairment? Should either both, or should we treat them differently? Because impairment's the same, whether you take opioid or cannabis, impairment's the same. On a site, risk will happen. Doesn't matter what you take it, the outcome's the same. So we're just trying to establish what's your view, listen to opioid impairment compared to cannabis impairment? Why should cannabis be treated differently to opioid?
It does need to be treated differently in that you can't actually test impairment in cannabis, whereas you can in opioids. That's my understanding. A positive test for opioids actually equates to impairment. It doesn't with cannabis.
David?
I don't know where to start. Can I just get the, sort of, your point of departure here, or launching pad or whatever? But you're saying to the committee that you're quoting this Keith Strauss from 1979, who's basically saying that medicinal cannabis is a conspiracy to legalize cannabis more generally. Is that correct?
Yes.
Therefore, you shouldn't have medicinal cannabis?
Well, we just say it's a stalking horse for the full legalization, which we oppose.
So basically...
We have to highlight that.
So we've heard, for example, that there was about a million cannabis, medicinal cannabis scripts provided by doctors to patients last year. You're saying that's not appropriate?
I just want to read something to you.
Could you please just answer the question?
I'd like to read it by augmenting my answer, if I may.
Please, knock yourself out.
Because I'm going to go to the heart of your answer. Because one of the problems, we feel that it's quite possible that there hasn't been enough investment and energy to support the fact that medicinal cannabis is out there. And no matter... Look, every day I hear a large number of users. About a fortnight ago, it was 300, and yesterday it was 800, and you're saying a million, a hundred thousand.
There's a million, there's over a million prescriptions that went through the TGA last year.
Well, thank you for that. I appreciate that clarification. And that's a terrifying amount, because there's so much of this that is, that could have THC embedded in it, as you know.
No, this is THC medicine we're talking about, and it's CBD medicine.
Yes. Are you talking about CBD or CBD and THC? Which one are you talking about?
As the committee has heard, it's very actually hard to remove all THC traces from CBD.
I'm glad to hear that admission.
You're actually the first people who've come in through all the submissions we've got that actually have said that CBD should be banned. I think...
I've read evidence in, if I may just correct that point. I've read evidence in from an article from a respected...
No, no, I'm talking about in terms of the submissions that's been received by this committee.
I'm sorry, I can't account for the submissions of other people.
Okay, so they're wrong, and you're right?
Quite possibly.
So you're saying CBD is not effective for pain relief? You understand that most people take CBD for inflammation and stress? And can I ask, whether that's right or wrong, why should that make it illegal?
Because it's part of a program as a stalking horse, a Trojan horse, galloping horses, to actually legalize cannabis in a full-body form. And we have so much evidence where it's been legalized and the reversal occurring in the United States. The chagrin that the Canadian government's looked at it in review.
When you say chagrin in Canada, let's just go to that one. So you'd be, you're obviously right up to date on this stuff. You've obviously seen then the review that was released two weeks ago or three weeks ago, which was the legislative review.
Yes, I have it here. I have it here.
You've got the... Oh, that's a very slimline version, but interesting.
Well, I've brought in enough to refer to today.
That actually didn't find what you're saying, did it? That Canadian review, the statutory review?
I'd like to read a passage. It centers on the point you're making, this recommendation 45. And I think this is really important, because if we're going to push through this, and perhaps the numbers are there for this legislation to pass and to be...
So you said that before. What legislation are you talking about?
The workplace regulations. So if we're...
So can I just say that we're all on the same page? I think that would be appropriate, Chair.
It'd be difficult.
The legislation...
Well, there will be legislation that follows from these inquiries. That's the purpose of it, surely.
Well, not into cannabis. It's actually, this is an inquiry into workplace drug testing. And up until now, all of the focus has been actually on, really, I think primarily on the question of how do you deal with impairment at the workplace? So contrary to what you've said before about all the other drugs and cannabis, we're actually focused... Cannabis is obviously a high profile, but we're actually interested in broader questions of impairment.
It's a very worrying substance, and the people who have become addicted...
It's a very worrying substance, and the people who have become addicted to it have used it as a gateway drug, the societies that have been affected by it, it's a very serious question. We firmly believe that we're on the right side of history and that people will change their point of view. I'd like to refer to recommendation forty-five, which has been referred to by David Eppashank, and it's the legislative review of the Cannabis Act, final report of the expert panel dated Friday the twenty-sixth of March, twenty twenty-four, and it's from the Canadian government. And there's a number of passages in it that are pertinent, but we don't have time. But I think what I would like to say is that if we're going to forge ahead with this, that everybody, doctors, nurses, hospital administrators, actuaries, people who write insurance for public liability, all of, a whole panoply of entities and people who will be swept in through these processes going ahead, that we need to understand that there's actually a lag in the learning of the people who are prescribing this. There's a missing link, there's a hole you can drive a train through. And this is what recommendation forty-five says. Health Canada, in partnership with provinces, territories, patients, and healthcare professionals, should support the development and dissemination of national clinical guidance documents related to cannabis for medical purposes, to increase the knowledge and understanding of healthcare professionals. I'm going to interrupt my quote to say, this is, since they have, cannabis has been legalised in Canada since two thousand and eighteen, so this is six years on, this is an expert review, these are the things they didn't think about when they launched into this.
Well, actually, this is a review that was conducted, because it was written into that act when it was passed in Canada in twenty seventeen. Chair, I might leave it there.
It's not an episodic review, but I'd like to finish my quote, if I may, Chair.
I'll finish my questioning there, but perhaps we can pick up some of this stuff when we do our visit to Roswell and Area Fifty-Two. Thank you.
Okay, okay, I'll continue my quote for the purposes of Hansard, and I'm sorry to make it difficult for you. These documents should cover issues such as indications for which there is sufficient evidence, base of effectiveness, how to monitor patients, how to track and report adverse reactions. That's the whole, ladies and gentlemen, Canada, six years down the line. Thank God for the review. I hope this nation can learn from the Canadian experience.
If you'd like to submit that, for our Dr. Mans, if you'd like a quick question before we finish this off, please.
Sure, I'm just wanting to understand in a bit, just, I'm not entirely clear why medicinal cannabis is so different to other prescribed medications. I want to understand why it has to be treated so differently. You've mentioned that a number of times, that it should be considered quite separately to other prescribed medications.
It's still cannabis, that's a simple answer, it's still cannabis, and cannabis is illegal. They've strapped on a very convenient prefix in marketing, it's called rebranding. Do you understand what I'm saying? It's a rebranding exercise.
Okay, and can I just add?
There's nothing different.
Cannabis causes impairment, whereas obviously antibiotics don't. So cannabis causes impairment, and like I said before, reading out from that systematic review, there's no universally agreed way of testing that impairment. So cannabis stays in the system beyond the acute phase into the residual phase, it can be days, weeks, depending on a person's usage. As can a whole range of other prescribed medications. Absolutely. And so in terms of testing then, testing cannot tell us whether a person, it tells us that a person has used, it doesn't tell us when they used, and it doesn't tell us importantly about impairment, whereas a roadside drug, sorry, alcohol test, point oh five, it's an established measure of impairment. Now, of course, it might vary a little bit from person to person, depending on your weight, your size, how, are you a big drinker, or do you hardly ever have a drink? There's a little bit of variation, but there is actually an agreed upon approach, the point oh five is at the point at which we are concerned about a person's reaction time, their processing speed, their alertness, and that's the point. With cannabis, if there was some agreed cutoff, and I remember working years ago in child protection, and remembering the struggles we had when we'd get a parent to do a drug screen, and cannabis showed, because we don't know exactly what it's telling us, because it can stay in the system for so long. So that's the difference between cannabis and, say, you know, opioids or alcohol, not that I'm condoning alcohol, it's not a prescribed medication, but that's the difference between cannabis and opioids. There are a whole range of other medications that can cause, or we had, you know, someone appear earlier who listed a whole host of other medications that cause significant, can cause significant impairment.
Right.
More so than cannabis.
Right.
That are prescription medications, they're not tested for, but you're saying we have a good way of testing for impairment for those medications, but we don't, is that...
That's my understanding, from reading the research. I'm not a scientist, I'm not in medicine.
And do you know what tests we use to test for impairment for those prescription medications?
No, because I'm not a scientist, I'm not a medical person, I'm telling, I'm quoting from the evidence, and there is evidence, like I said, from this systematic review last year, talking about the impairments and the workplace safety issues that can arise out of medicinal cannabis are numerous, and...
Did that study apply to medicinal, was it just looking at medicinal cannabis, or was it looking at cannabis?
No, it was just looking at medicinal cannabis, and it was looking at, so the systematic review, thirty-one studies, looked at those thirty-one studies where medicinal cannabis was prescribed and what the adverse effects were, and these were the adverse effects. So then they applied that, it was in the Journal of Occupational Health and Safety, something like that, and they apply, and I can send you the research paper, absolutely. I can do that. So, and if there was a journal, if there was a journal article like that about opioids or about Valium, and then I would be, you know, and there might be, I haven't looked, to be honest, I didn't look at all of those other medications, or any of those other medications. When we did this, we focused on cannabis, because that was in the terms of reference, where that was listed as one of the key terms, prescription medicinal cannabis. So that's what we focused on. We didn't focus on any of those other medications, because there are so many of them. But I would fully accept that there might be other medications that might also be concerning, fully accept that. And if that's the case, then we need to look into that for the point of worker safety, absolutely. Yep.
Thank you, thank you, Sam. Thank you very much for your submission today, and definitely good submission, which relate to the workplace drug testing, whether it's cannabis or other substance, that's what we refer to, so we definitely look at your evidence for submitting that, and we'll look into those, relate to the testing part, we'll definitely, as committee, we'll look forward to submitting, like, recommendations based on some evidence you provide as well. But again, thank you for coming in and giving your submission, and also your...
And would you like me to send you?
If you could, please.
Where do we send them to? Will they, yeah, we'll find out.
The club itself.
Great.
Could I ask Hansard to conclude the recording, please?